August the 27th, 2019 to order. Please join me for the invocation. Heavenly Father, we're grateful today to be here in Locksley to conduct the business of the Baldwin County Public School System. We ask for guidance and wisdom and courage to do the right thing. Lord, you have blessed us and we're thankful that we live in this county. Lord, we are grateful for the many blessings of Baldwin County. And, Lord, we just ask that we continue to do the right thing with the right spirit, the right heart, that we keep the main thing, the main thing, and keep the courage about us. Lord, we pray today for the young lady from Daphne Anna and for Sheila James' brother. Lord, would remember them and the families. Anyone else who's hurting. Lord, we just thank you for the time together. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. If we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance if you're able.
Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's she was, that's she was son. Son?
Son.
That's her son.
That's her son.
Dog.
Well, he knows.
That mistake's on you this time.
Okay, that was on me. Well, the man knows. All right. Mr. Wilhite, do we have any letters of commendation tonight? Mr. Superintendent, amendments to the agenda?
Yes, sir. We have no amendments.
Well, we're ready for the items of business.
Read that right then, Eloise. Okay, just want to make sure.
Hey, let me correct myself. Is Sheila's son? That got a little confused and I stayed completely, but he knows who it is and knows all the details about it. So, anyway, Sheila's son.
Okay, items of business. Agenda item one, Alabama Trust Boards of Education General Liability Errors and Omissions Liability Fund Participation Renewal 2019-2020. Superintendent recommends adoption of a motion to approve the renewal of the ATBE General Liability Errors and Omissions Liability Fund Participation for 2019-2020 as stipulated in the agenda exhibit.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Dawson, a second by Mrs. Lynch. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item two, approval of agreement Sawgrass Consulting LLC. Superintendent recommends adoption of a motion to approve to enter into a contract with Sawgrass Consulting LLC for design and inspection fees for Baldwin County High School resurfacing as stipulated in the agenda exhibit.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Johnson, a second by Ms. Lindsay. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item three, approval of fee schedule and procedures for records request. Superintendent recommends adoption of a motion to approve the fee schedule and procedures for record requests as stipulated in the agenda exhibit.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Colly, a second by Mrs. Lynch. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item four, leave of absence of personnel. Superintendent recommends adoption of a motion to approve the leave of absence of personnel as provided to board members under separate cover.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Dawson, a second by Mrs. Lynch. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item five, retirement and resignation of personnel. Superintendent recommends adoption of a motion to approve the retirement and resignation of personnel as provided to board members under separate cover.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Lynch, a second by Mrs. Dawson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item six, transfer intended transfer of personnel. Superintendent recommends adoption of a motion to approve the transfer intended transfer of personnel as provided to board members under separate cover.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Lindsay, a second by Mr. Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item seven, employment of personnel. Superintendent recommends adoption of a motion to approve the employment of personnel as provided to board members under separate cover.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Colly, a second by Mrs. Lindsay. Any discussion?
What, where, Jennifer, why would we have so many pendings? We didn't have to start to get them off the tree.
I mean, yeah. Hard to get this because it's so late in the school year and finding, you know, teachers, especially in some of those areas, it's just really difficult. And some of the situations, I mean, we have one individual, one of you graduated in August from Alabama, his application's being processed, one graduated.
I can understand if they graduated.
Right, so there were several individuals just waiting for their certificate to be issued.
All of them are? All of those pendings are graduates?
Yes, well, either they were a graduate or they're waiting on how to take reciprocity so they can come out of state. So all of them have, and then there's one that is going to be going the provisional path to certification. So in other words, she didn't go to school to be a teacher, but she's got a degree in a business area and she's going to be teaching now.
Business degree. Baskett Lee.
Yeah.
Any other discussion or questions? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item eight, extra work for extended periods. The superintendent recommends adoption of a motion to approve the extra work of personnel as provided to board members under separate cover.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Dawson, a second by Mr. Myrick. I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Johnson, just making you pay attention down there. Any questions, any discussion? Had Tony on my mind. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item nine, 2019-2020 revision to wage rates for extra work. Superintendent recommends adoption of a motion to approve the wage rates for extra work as stipulated in the agenda exhibit.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Lindsay and a second by Mrs. Dawson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have. Mr. Kristen, there.
Any other board member have anything that need to bring up tonight before we get into the fund that we look so forward to? And that is the first budget hearing. Hey, do we adjourn from the meeting and then do that or is that part of the meeting?
And I think it has to be official.
Part of the meeting? Okay, so we won't adjourn. So if you're through, we'll now turn this over to the CSFO of the year. And we're proud that he's our CSFO and that's John Wilson. John, come woo us with the numbers.
Woo us? I haven't been wooed in a while.
Y'all get excited. Come on, this is, this is a budget hearing, I'm telling you.
I'm waiting to be wooed.
I was gonna say, I'm not touching that.
Can we not look at this? Is it different?
It's really easier to look up there.
Can we turn back? Have we moved?
Is woo not the right word?
Look, y'all. Am I gonna have to plug it up somewhere?
All right, everybody, stretched, ready to, ready to go. All righty. Welcome to the FY 2020 Proposed First Budget Hearing. This is a long one. As everybody knows, I'm John Wilson, the CSFO for Baldwin County. And it's that time of year again. It's budget time. I know everyone feels the same way. All righty. This is kind of my typical first slide. It really kind of explains the scope of how, how big our budget is. We've consolidated some accounts and we brought it down to around, you know, 1,200 pages if you go line by line. So first, before I get started, I want to thank, you know, my two supervisors that work with me, Patsy and Lisa, if you could raise your hand. Patsy helps with state funds, Lisa helps with federal. Yeah, that's right. Woo! Yeah. Because, and, you know, that being said, I don't have as many jokes or as many funny memes this year because it was a, it was a scramble this year to get the budget done on time. We normally get our allocations from the state in May. We got it this year in like mid-July. And so that left us, you know, I don't know, a month, a couple of weeks. What normally takes us about, you know, two to three months, we had to get, we had to wrap up and finish up in a couple of weeks. I expect to get the budget done and then it takes me a while to put this presentation together. So it has been a mad scramble. I don't know what's going on with the state. That's the latest the allocations have ever been. It seems like every year, you know, things get more and more discombobulated, but we all know that. So I won't say anything else about that. Seventy-three different sources of state, federal, and local funds. I like to point this out, and sixty-three of those are earmarked funds that are restricted for designated purposes. I always think that's important to point out to the public that so many of the funds that we have have designated legal purposes of how they, how they are to be spent. Here it is. Here's the summary for our 2020 year. You can see our net expenditures is $454 million here. And just as a quick summary, it's also inside your books. And just to explain, the books, if anybody wants to go into the detail, you can see the breakout for every school, for every department. And when I talk about personnel, you can see the breakout, state, federal, and local for every school in Baldwin County as well. And so this is kind of a summarized version of some of the details in this book. You can also see this summary and breakout of some of our revenue. Also in this book is a quick reminder of our fund types. And I'll quickly go through that for anybody who may be new here. We have five funds that we operate. We have the, the general fund, which is right here, and the general fund basically, and these are summarized in the next slide, but the general fund represents the primary operating functions of the school system. That's what I report on every month. That's where most everything as far as operating the school system occurs. You can see, you know, roughly around $261 million of expenditures. Special revenue is the next fund. And special revenue is basically funds where the proceeds are legally restricted to expenditures for specific purposes other than state funds. So falling into special revenue would be all of our federal funds. It would be C&amp;P funds. It would also, you know, in the local revenue section, it would represent the half-cent sales tax, which is legally restricted earmarks on it, as well as public dollars raised at the local school level, as well as receipts from the payment of the lunch program. All of those things kind of roll into the special revenue fund here. Debt service is pretty self-explanatory, as well as capital projects. Really in capital projects, it'll be, you know, a lot of our new construction, as well as our capitalized maintenance projects and our purchase of buses. Fiduciary expendable trust here. What that is, that's non-public funds at the school level. So every, every school rolls up into a total that rolls into what we present countywide. All righty, let's get into the meat of it. So I'm going to break down our revenue first. You can see state revenue, we saw an increase of $4.5 million. I'm going to break that down. We saw a decrease in federal revenue. We saw a decrease in local revenue, really directly related to the Gulf Shores split. And that's really going to be something I spend a lot of time on so the board understands the implications, how everything shook out once Gulf Shores broke away from Baldwin County. Other revenue is really miscellaneous. Majority of that is P-card rebates and also state C&amp;P rebates that we get. It kind of varies. It's one of those items that's sometimes a little hard to budget and I usually will kind of follow and amend it throughout the year. Total revenue, you can see about flat from where we were this time last year. You can see the breakdown. We operate about 46% of our revenue is state, 46.7% is local. Federal's about 7.1%. I know a lot of people are always shocked. I think everyone thinks federal is a much higher appropriation than what we really get. They have a lot more rules and regulations and paperwork, but it's only represents 7% of the revenue that we get. And you can see there, other is just a tiny little sliver there. So I'm going to drill into state revenue. So you can see the foundation program is the big revenue source for the state. That increased by $2.6 million. STE appropriations, I'm going to walk through that, but what that is, is that would be our NUR, some of our career tech allocations, ARI, the Reading Initiative, and some state ESL. Transportation, if you look at Operation and Fleet Renault, we saw a nice increase of $961,000 year-over-year. At-risk, we saw a statewide cut to our at-risk funding for this year. I think it was around $750,000 statewide that was cut. It's a little frustrating, you know, the state passed a 4% raise this year. We have around, I think, six social workers that are coming out of this source of funds. And so they appropriated a 4% raise and then the funding source that's paying for these units got cut statewide. There are two different pre-K programs in Baldwin County. OSR is the Office of School Readiness Pre-K Program that is a grant application and requires a match in order to do that. You can see we lost Gulf Shores and we picked up another site. So that's roughly about flat from where we were. We saw a nice increase in our other preschool from the state. Majority of that goes to some of our special education inclusion preschool classrooms. Capital outlay, I'm going to walk through that, but we saw about a $500,000 increase there. So you can see it all totals up to about a $4.5 million increase from 162 to 167. So you may be wondering, how did that happen when, in relations to the Gulf Shore split? And I think the way to look at it is to drill down into the foundation program. So as everyone knows, that the, the foundation program is really driven by ADM, which is the average daily membership, and that represents the total average daily enrollment during the first 20 days after Labor Day of the previous school year. So this represents roughly an average October count from 2018. It does not include pre-K students. We have over 800 pre-K students in the county. So some of the, the enrollment numbers, you'll see, some of them show ADM, some of them will show true enrollment, and the difference will, will be your pre-K. You can see the implication here, just looking at year-over-year, you saw a drop of about 1,400 students. You saw a drop of 76 teachers, three principals, you can probably guess, Gulf Shores, elementary, middle, high. And so I'm going to kind of switch between the two, but what I thought would be the most helpful is to take that change and let's look at the implications from Gulf Shores. So the Gulf Shores ADM, and again, this was based on enrollment last October, the student counts within the city limits of Gulf Shores, it was, you know, 1,947. That's higher than what we were initially planning because number one, the 12th graders stayed there, the 11th graders stayed there, and most of the 10th graders stayed there. And so that brought us up to almost 1,950 there. So you can see what we only had a drop of 1,454 in our, in our ADM meeting, that if we exclude Gulf Shores, the rest of the county grew by 492 students. So you can see the net impact there. 111 teachers went to Gulf Shores directly through the foundation program. Net drop of 76 teachers. Like I said, the three principals, the three assistant principals, the four-and-a-half counselors, the three librarians. So roughly about 24 administrative foundation positions went to Gulf Shores for FY '20. And so if we look at the ADM countywide, we can see, and it's basically if you add these two figures together, you're going to get 31,593. That's what our ADM would have been if Gulf Shores would have stayed in the system. And you can see that represents 93.8% of the countywide kids are in Baldwin County and 6.1% are in the Gulf Shore School District. Now, I'm going to come back to this percentage when I, when I go over our local revenue and how that's split. So looking at the, the cost for the, for the, the cost breakdown for the units that we earned, I'm also going to show the Gulf Shores implication there, but before I get there, I'm going to talk about some increases that we saw. Other current expenses, this is the one area of state funding that there's no earmarking provisions. And so we have the ability to use other current expenses as we see fit. We currently use all of it for two purposes, is that we cover the additional 5% cost over and above the state salary matrix, and we use the rest to cover classified employees at the school level. Because as you can see, there's no allocation for a janitor, or for a secretary, or for a registrar, or all those other kind of front office positions. And so really try to use current expense, all of the remaining dollars to cover that. That went from 17,950 to 19,000 per unit. There's no rhyme or reason why it's that. It's a plug figure at the state. They may try to come up and say, well, actually, you know, it's based on this. No, it's just that at the end of the budget process, they just plug it. So, but we're fortunate it went up. A lot of, a lot of the, the increase was probably factoring in the, the 4% raise, since a lot of systems use OCE to cover their classified staff as well. A nice jump in, in teachers, CIS dollars, from 536 per teacher to $600 per teacher. I think that's the highest I've ever seen it. We're still using Class Wallet. To my knowledge, that's been very successful. What Class Wallet allows us to do, allows us to, to basically make these funds available starting July 1. And so the $600 per teacher was made available through Class Wallet starting July 1. Now, I have one caveat, if I'm going to make it available July 1, I need it spent by the end of May. You know, we have a few people that look at the law and they said legally, you know, I, you know, I'm supposed to have till the end of September to spend these funds. And legally, that's correct, but I'm not going to advance you your allocation if you don't spend it by May because I'm not going to commingle two fiscal years of funds. But that's just been a small majority, but for the most part, that's been a very successful program and it actually follows the school year. So you can take your classroom instructional dollars, get it in July when you're, you're probably realizing that school's about to start, it's right around the corner, and especially new teachers can really get a head start. And then have it spent by the end of the school year because that's how it's supposed to be spent anyway. Nice increase in technology from $300 a teacher unit to 350. Library enhancement from 96 to 158. Professional development from 90 to 100. And textbooks went from $70 in ADM to 75. Every teacher gets this. These technology, library, enhancement, and professional developments are basically budgeted by committee at the school. And so the teachers will submit a ballot and decide who's going to be on that committee. That committee will make decisions and create a budget of how they're going to spend those funds. That budget will be approved by the, the teacher body, and then it will be expensed appropriately. That actually follows the fiscal year. So I make, you know, CIS available July 1. These come in October, and you do have till the, the end of September to spend those. So if we look at this with a decline of about 1,400 ADM, we, you would expect about a $1.3 million drop in your foundation program, but that's all before the 10 mil match. And this is where things get, get interesting. All righty, the 10 mil match. So our 10 mil match was scheduled to increase up to, to $43.6 million for this fiscal year from 41.4 last fiscal year. So we are, if Gulf Shores would have stayed in the system, it would have been a $2.1 million increase in the 10 mil match, which means a $2.1 million direct cut in your state funding. So I mean, whatever your 10 mil match is, that's taken off before any of your state funds are received. Now, Gulf Shores has a high mil rate down there of $6.1 million. So you can see if you take last year's 41, take out, you know, take the 43, subtract the 6.1, it actually brought us to 37.4 million, meaning that's a direct $6 million increase. And you're, you're probably wondering how I got $6 million. Well, it saved us 2.1 because we knew it was going to increase to 43.6, and we see a direct $4 million increase from where it was last year. Does everybody follow me on that one? I know the 10 mil match and equity funding and those kind of things can get complicated and convoluted and those type things. So if I roll it up into the big picture here, and you look at the last three slides and you kind of pull it all together for a summary, it's an interesting picture, and I can guarantee that we are the only county in all of Alabama, probably, or even in the history of city systems. systems breaking away, that you can lose 1,400 students and see a net gain of $2.6 million in your state funding. So, yeah. So, you know, that's definitely a, that's definitely a first. It's definitely one of the interesting aspects of following the Guff Shore split. And you can see where that's coming from, because right here, the higher, you know, the lower this is, the more this is going to be. Now, just for the fun of it, what's Guff Shores' total picture? And you can see here that with about 1,947 ADM, they earned about 124 units. Before the 10 mil match, they should get $12.2 million. Their 10 mil match is 6.1 here. That gives them 6.1 in state funding for FY '20. So that's probably the highest I've ever seen as far as your 10 mil match, the direct reduction of what you receive from the state. Now, I want you to remember this 6.1 10 mil match, because I'm going to come back to it when I show you what Guff Shores' percentage of the 12 mils that they receive is, because it's less than that. So that's what makes it even more interesting. Alrighty, I did a slide last year, I thought it was a good slide. I think the main purpose of this slide is to basically, to show that the state never fully funds anything that they provide, anything, nothing is fully funded. You guys know about the foundation program and the 10 mil match requirements. Looking at transportation, we have around, you know, 76 locally funded bus drivers, and we still have to usually pay some local funds to cover the fuel costs, and to the extent of about $2.2 million over and above our state appropriation to run the buses every day in Ballin County. Capital Outlay, around $7 million, a nice increase there. 2.1 is deducted from that, and that's based on our state bond payments. In a slide later down in the presentation, I kind of show some of our capital maintenance projects to our existing schools. We estimate that at about $3.5 million. The good news about that is that gives us about $1.4 million that I plan on moving over for new construction purposes. You know, as we look at bidding out, I mean, Daphne Middle and moving forward with the Ninth Grade Academy, at Fairhope, I'll be moving funds from all over the place to cover some of those expenses, and that'll be one of the areas where I pull from. And that's just an example of, we've spent a tremendous amount of money, and I'm going to talk about this later, but we've spent a tremendous amount of money maintaining our existing schools. We're averaging eight to nine million dollars a year in HVAC and boiler and chillers and roof, and we're down to about 3.5. And so that investment is paying off, because we're allowed to, because we now can use that funding source and move it over to some new construction, because we've done so much on our existing campuses. Alright, OSR. In order to fully fund that program, we have to supplement about 1.9 million of Title I funds for the pre-K program. And so, you know, it's a little bit misleading, some of the things that you may hear on the state or some of the news report, or Alabama's got the best, you know, pre-K program, and it is a good pre-K program, and we are fortunate that they're doing this. But again, it does, what no one ever talks about, it does have a pretty high expensive matching provision in order to fully, fully fund it, and that's why it's mostly at our Title I schools. Transportation fleet renewal, we're spending about an additional $600,000 over and above our 1.8, and I believe we're going to purchase around 30 buses, 32 buses, and I think two special needs buses, that's included in that total? Okay, yes, that's what I thought. 30, yes, yes, ma'am. 30 regular buses and two special needs buses. And special needs buses can cost anywhere from, you know, 110 to 120 by the time the lifts and the air conditioning and all the other provisions are installed on those buses. The Alabama Reading Initiative, we saw about a $43,000 drop there, and that's directly related to the Guff Shore split. Currently funds about 15 out of our 31 reading coaches. I also want to say, you know, during this presentation, you guys feel free to jump in at any time, Mr. Tyler, feel free to jump in anytime, comments, questions, anything. You know, I want this to be an open discussion, and if anything, that I show you spurs additional questions or anything, you know, I think this, you know, this is definitely the time and the place to discuss it, and if I don't know the answer, I'll answer it at the second School Nurse Program, this is one of the big, kind of, underfunded areas in Alabama, in my opinion. We saw a little bit of a drop year over year. I think that's probably related to the Guff Shore split as well. A little over a million dollars. That funds about 13 out of our 51 RN positions. If you include LPN positions, I think we're at, I think, 75 to 80 RN and LPN positions. It's a, you know, that's one of the, safety is a very underfunded area in the state of Alabama. I think that's something that needs to have a strong emphasis on, and we saw that live last week. We saw, you know, the school nurse, we saw the administrators save a student's life at Daphne High School. That's why we put such an emphasis, and we dedicate so many local funds to make sure every school has at least one, if not, if not more than one. I just wish the state would understand how important that is. So I'll keep preaching that. At Risk, I mentioned it earlier, that we did saw, we did see a decline of around $116,000. That funds about, actually about five and a half out of our 11 social workers we have throughout the county. Career Tech, O&amp;M, that's operation and maintenance money. Considering the big emphasis and push for workforce development and everything else, you know, it's small, but it's helpful. Alabama ESL, that's English as a Second Language. We saw a nice increase there, and really, that was a mistake that was done last year with the student count. We tried to communicate with the state to try to get that corrected. That didn't work, but at least we saw, one year later, the correction. And so we were kind of expecting an increase here, so that was nice to see. Still, it only funds about four out of our 26 ESL teachers. ESL is an area where we're seeing a lot of tremendous student growth and a lot of different languages out there. And so that is definitely a difficult area to, correct, yeah. We have, we have 26. Yes, ma'am.
So if it's only funding like 15,91, 15,951, then others are funded on local funds?
Everybody's local. ESL, we do get a little bit of title money, so some of the 26 teachers are coming out of Title III. But ARI, vocal, school nurse, local, At Risk, local. ESL, a little bit of title money can go there. Preschool, again, it's, especially for the preschool inclusion, there's some federal dollars from the special ed side that go into that. Gifted, I still haven't gotten my allocation yet, so I'm hoping that it's going to stay the same as last year, but I don't know. I mean, here we are at the end of August, and the state still doesn't provide the basic allocations that were approved by the legislative delegation in May, so. So I'm just, I'm going to hope that it, you know, I haven't, it seemed like at the statewide level, it was roughly the same. Now, there've been charter schools, and there've been other things that have added, and so the pie gets smaller every year, but, you know, I'm not anticipating a material change. But I mean, that's something that we don't know, because they don't take the efforts to give local schools their allocations, and here we are, the school's already started.
Let Andrea finish her question.
Okay. Well, I don't want to put you on the spot, because this is probably going to be a guess. But, okay, so funded positions versus non-funded positions that might be local, what do you think the percentage of that is? I mean, that we're, we actually can find funds to hire them and keep them versus using local funds?
It's very small. And really, if the state doesn't fund it, it's either federal or it's local.
Okay, so what percentage would you throw out, you think that's local? I'm just, I'm just asking.
Probably 80 to 90% local. What do you, what do you guys think? Yeah, I mean, you saw, I mean, 7% of our revenue is federal. If it's not state, it either has to be federal.
So it's a lot of local.
Yeah. I will, I will drill down to that and give you the exact percentage at the next budget hearing, but if I was off the top of my head, I would say it's probably 90 or higher.
Okay, that's.
Really, it's local's the catch-all, especially on the statewide level, to help fund these programs that are never fully funded by the state.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Shannon, do you have a question about?
I mean, no, but I would just, my field of expertise, talking about, that's a lot of local, it's not the body. I don't know where you say, that's too many, I don't know where you start, well, we really need that, we need that. We need all of these things, I think it's just, we need some kind of.
Yeah, and trust me, I have slides talking about our locally funded units. I know that's going to spur a lot of additional, you know, discussion, but it comes to a point where you really have to start prioritizing. You only have a certain amount of dollars, and that's, that's hard, and that's difficult, because there are a lot of needs throughout the county.
Well, I agree that it's high, and like I say, what number do you put on nurses in our schools?
Yeah, I mean, you know, to me, I think safety always takes first priority.
I don't want to be the one to say, let's cut 25 nurses, and then we've got 20 schools.
Yeah, absolutely.
No, and that's what I did, I didn't mean that. I just wanted to, I just kind of wanted to have an idea. I mean, that we wouldn't be where we are without the local funds.
I think that's an excellent question.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to do without them, that's for sure.
You know, some of the, some of the more rural states, you know, when they're only relying on state funding, they really, really struggle.
Yeah.
Do we know why we haven't heard on the gifted, what's the holdup? So we call Montgomery tomorrow?
I called Montgomery multiple times. I'll give you the example, we was, you know, we still were missing our special ed allocations, a lot of other allocations. The guy who does that, I emailed him towards the end of July, and I said, can you please give me an update of where we are? And I get a away-from-office-on-vacation-for-two-weeks message, so. Yeah, so I wish I had an answer. I know we, you know, for a while, I was bugging them so bad that I'd, Annie Craig called But I mean, you know, how can you operate? You have to plan. In the summertime, I mean, knowing what your allocations are, you know, allows you to have an idea of what's going to be available. If you don't know it, are you going to eat it locally if it doesn't become available? I mean, having an October 1st fiscal year is extremely difficult for school systems. You know, we're one of only three states in the nation that have a October 1st fiscal year, because it doesn't make sense for school systems at all.
Well, I, not to point fingers or say anything, and I know how difficult it is to try to schedule a vacation when you work for a school system, and especially in an area of finances, but sort of a very difficult time to take a vacation. I don't resent the fact, but when you have schools starting who have not received allocations nor funds for those allocations as directed by the state, as qualified for, and I don't think anybody understands how difficult that is for school systems to function in, you know, in this situation. Yeah.
Yeah, no question. And I guess the moral of the story was to show that I don't think they care up there. I mean, otherwise, they would have said, get your, get your job. I mean, you know that once that bill is passed and the governor signs off on it, you need to get those out to the school system. I mean.
I think it's very disheartening when, in general, what we're talking about here is that we're worried about the priority education in our state takes with some leaders. And that's a shame.
Yeah, and Mr. Tyler was copied on the emails. I mean, we, we reached out a lot, I know that he reached out, we were all reaching out. I don't know what everybody else did. I thought there'd be more of an outcry statewide, but it seemed like I was the only one screaming at times, but, you know, it's all good. Just to, just to wrap up this slide, you can see we saw a small bump in the technology coordinator appropriation, and Anthony and Patrice actually applied and was awarded an anti-bullying state grant that we actually got in time to include in the budget, so. And that makes up our 167 million for state funding. One thing, too, I know you probably saw in the news, and you saw a lot of other things saying, you know, record, you know, education budget at the state. And I, you know, I wanted to track state revenue per ADM. And again, this is not just foundation, this is everything. This is all, you know, 167 million dollars, you know, divided by our ADM. And you can see, we have from a dollar-for-dollar percentage increase from where we were in 2008. So you can see it went down into a, into a pretty scary territory, I can't talk today, but then it's been trending in the right direction. Now, whenever I see these, these news articles, and whenever I see everybody pounding their chest, this is a record high, you know, education number, I want to remind them that there's been almost a 20% cumulative rate of inflation since 2008. And so if you really wanted to do an apples-to-apple comparison, you know, we would be closer to $6,200 per student in state revenue. So anyway, I just like to throw that out for, for what it's worth. Trivia, can anybody guess what Guff Shores will be? Alright, so Guff Shores, their total state funding is about $7.2 million, divided by their ADM of 1,947 kids, puts them, at the start of their first school year, at $3,735 per kid in state funding. So just, just kind of soak that in for a second. So at the bottom of the recession, with three different years of proration during one of the most difficult financial times for Ballin County, that's their under to start their school year. They're not reporting that on the news. I couldn't help myself. Okay, this is where things kind of take a turn. There were some surprises this year, there were also some areas that, that we just messed up on, and so I'm going to kind of talk through those. IDA, that's the, that's the federal special ed funding. I was shocked at this decline. I knew that it was going to decline because of Guff Shores. We spent roughly around 300 to 350 at the three Guff Shore schools, but we've seen a tremendous increase in our special education numbers. And so I was thinking that this number was going to remain flat. It's part of the issue that, you know, we have projections, knowing of the current student situations throughout the county and caseloads, and we hired about 24 new positions to start off this school year. And then at the end of all, at the end of July, we got this allocation, and it was a drop of 600,000. And so when something like this happens, to your question, Andrea, you know, there's only two things you can do. You can either lay off these people, or you have to exhort them locally. And we exhort them locally, and that's, that's part of why we're seeing some of our numbers rise, too. So it's a combination of different things. I'm still waiting for an answer on the state to try to get an understanding of this decline. So I'll, you know, I'll actually, I have a, I have a conference, actually the Monday before the next budget hearing, and so since they're not answering my emails, I'm going to kind of pin them in the corner and find them and ask that question, so. Vocational, that's the Perkins federal dollars. We saw a decline of $27,000. That's probably, that's related to Guff Shores. We saw a pretty big hit in our, in our title funds. Um, we were expecting, um, you know, a Gulf Shores Elementary and Gulf Shores Middle, they're a Title I school, so we knew there was going to be a little bit of a hit, not to the tune of that. And, uh, I'm going to talk about that in another slide. There's a reason why we dropped that much. Uh, you can see between our Title I, our N and D, and our Title II, um, it was close to nine hundred, you know, it was over nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar decline year over year. Title III, our, uh, that's really kind of our ESL. Uh, we were about flat. Um, and I don't have the breakout in front of me, but of the twenty-six ESL teachers, we, we probably fund, you know, I don't know, maybe, maybe two federally, another four, then we pick up the rest locally. Title IV, um, we saw about a flat allocation there. Um, this is kind of a new federal, um, appropriation. I know Anthony's, uh, very much involved in creating this budget. I think that it, it goes towards a resource, uh, resource teacher, uh, maybe at the alternative school. Impact, okay, the Impact Program, okay.
Impacts and academic programs that not just has test bank information cleaned up and you use some of the funds to help with our comprehensive monitoring, um, these by teachers, certain agents.
Thank you. Twenty-first century. Um, so we have currently applied for, for five grants. Um, each of those grants is roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, not sure if, uh, we're going to be awarded those, those grants. I know I've mentioned it in a, in a previous meeting, but they've changed the evaluation criteria for twenty-first century. Um, they weigh it a little bit differently than they had before, that if you've, uh, if you've never received a twenty-first century grant, then you have a, a much higher weighting of receiving one. So if you've never taken the effort to apply and write the grant, then you get awarded. Um, they're also doing a much higher, um, emphasis on free and reduced numbers. And so, um, when I show you our free and reduced numbers, which I will, um, it does have me concerned that we may not receive all five of our grants. I'm going to be optimistic that we do and I'll gladly come in the budget amendment and, uh, adjust those, uh, percentages, but you know, from where we stand right now, that's where we're looking. Um, what we used to do for our twenty-first century sites is that the current after-school program, the non-twenty-first century, the parents would pay, I think, twenty dollars a, a week. Um, and for the twenty-first century, the parents would pay about five dollars a week. And the point of that was to create sustainability funds. And so those funds would, would kind of be like a reserve fund. And so these grants are for a three-year period. If that grant is not awarded, um, we have something to fall back on. Now, I, I think this was a federal move from the state, but they're no longer allowing any sustainability funds. They say our reserve balances that we've collected over the years in order to maintain these funds, if they roll off, uh, you have to spend it by the end of the grant period. Uh, they also said you could no longer charge, uh, for students. And so that kind of creates the, the issue that if you lose a grant, there's nothing there to cover it like we previously had in place. So I don't know what the overall intent of, um, the law changed there. I mean, I, but, um, it is going to be something that, um, you know, we'll just have to see, um, you know, if the grants get awarded. Um, that'll be good. If they don't, then, um, I guess we'll just have to evaluate and see how we want to handle it.
I'm sorry. Um, that would indicate, or seems that in our areas where we might have the greatest need and we don't get those grants, that we're going to have, either fund that locally or we're going to have situations where the children are just not going to be able to be served.
Yeah, you're going to have to fund it locally or, you know, can those areas afford the, the twenty dollars a week? I don't think they can. You know, do we supplement that locally? Do we take, you know, some of that? Um, what can they afford? Um, can we consolidate in other locations? I mean, you know, you really kind of have to, to look at those situations.
Well, yes, that would be great. That would be great. We were mentioning.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, where that's, where that's concerned because these kids will have to have a place. Yeah.
So I'll be, um, I'll update the board when I have clarification, um, on when those grants are awarded. It's usually into the fall. Uh, estimated USDA, um, reimbursements for, uh, for free and reduced lunch is estimated at about nine point nine million dollars. We have the Department of Defense money, uh, that goes for our, our TC teachers. Uh, really, this amount changed and it was amended throughout the year. And so this is the original budget versus the original budget. Uh, and so it's really not that much of an increase. It's really flat because it did move this past year. Um, other federal revenue, we have a grant that provides funding for a transition coach for special education and we have a new career tech grant, I believe, that has two resource teachers at Baldwin County High School and Foley High School. And that kind of, uh, makes up the total of federal revenue. So from here, I'm going to kind of dive into the different categories. Looking at special education, so it's not just the six point one million dollars that I showed you. You can see to cover the, uh, the five hundred and eighty-three employees and the, and the four thousand eight hundred and sixty-six special needs students, um, about twenty-two million dollars, um, from the state foundation program is used for special needs teachers. Um, our allocation for this year is six point one and our local funds are eight point six. Um, we've seen these kind of swap over the last couple of years. I mean, we've seen about a two million dollar increase in our local funds. Um, I'm not going to get into details, but there are some specific requirements, um, regarding federal special ed, maintenance of effort provisions and those type of things to where once you spend it locally or once you spend it at the state, you can never reduce it, even if the economy falls out, even if all of our money goes away. And so that's one of the challenges with special ed. Because of the maintenance of effort provision, it does make it very difficult. It's why, it's probably one of those, probably one of the reasons why I, I kind of try to stay on top of it as much as I do. Uh, I show this chart every year. Um, you can see since two thousand and fourteen, we've seen a twenty percent, uh, increase in our special education student count. Uh, I keep hoping that this will, uh, this will calm down, this will, this will slow. You can see in the past, even when we've had eight hundred, you know, you know, regular ed kids, we'd saw, you know, kids come in, kids come out, we'd saw the normal ebb and flow. But, you know, my concern here and what I've, you know, brought to the attention of the board every year is that at this level, it's unsustainable, um, with, with the amount of resources that we have. And it does create the, uh, the issue that making sure the kids who really need it are getting it. Um, the board approved a study, um, last year, uh, to evaluate our special education growth. That study's been completed. We have a copy of that. Mr. Tyler's met with, with, with staff to go over the recommendations. I think he'd like to come back in October. I'll, I'll let you, I'll let you jump in to, to, to basically, um, address all of the recommendations from that study.
We are. The Barbara Mayer study that y'all, uh, approved and, um, staff has poured over. We had a, a very good meeting last week, uh, to break it out and to, uh, what needs to come back before we come to y'all, uh, publicly at a, at a board work session. We're looking at doing that. I think we said, uh, October, I believe, didn't we, John?
So more details, I know last year the question was, was asked, well, can we see the growth by category in special ed? And so, um, drilled into that, um, with the help of IT and, and I now, um, I, I, again, you can kind of, you know, without going through the details of the study, you can kind of see what one of our biggest growth areas is and how we need to create, uh, mechanisms to help bring that under control. And that's the other health impairment category, which is kind of like a catch-all provision for special ed. See roughly almost half of our entire growth has fallen into that category. Uh, I mean, we've seen a growth in, in autism students, but I think you're seeing that statewide. You're seeing that nationwide. That's not surprising. Um, you know, what jumps out are these two, uh, specific learning disabilities and OHI.
We asked last year if this is in county or it's kids who are transferring in?
So I, um, and that's a good question. So I backed into those numbers too. Um, uh, about half of our growth year over year, I don't have a slide to, to show this, but I'll be, I'll, I'll bring it up and, and show it on, on October when this subject is, is talked about in details. But about half of our growth, um, was from students directly moving in. About half of our growth were regular ed the previous year and were special ed the next year. So, um, classifications represented half and then we did see a significant number of, of students moving in as well. So, not, and then when I was looking at the reclassifications, I took out kindergarten and pre-K and, um, through the help of IT, we were able to back into, to who was regular ed last year and is now special ed. And so that was kind of eye-opening to me as well.
And I realize that this may be a discussion for October, but if our numbers are high and they're not being properly diagnosed, how does this affect the maintenance of effort that we just talked about on the last slide?
Yeah.
Because if we can't reduce it and then we find out that we haven't been labeled, not labeling, that is not the right word, it, we haven't been identifying, thank you. We haven't been identifying properly. We can't go back and fix that.
Right.
So now what?
Yeah. And that's a very serious concern. Huntsville City got into that trouble during the recession, their special, you know, before the recession, their special education department went a little bit, um, over the top and, um, you know, there were millions of dollars being spent that weren't necessarily needed. The recession came, they tried to reduce it and the federal government sued them. Sued them and the State Department of Education together. So, um, that's why I, I bring this up every year. That's why, you know, you know, me and Mr. Tyler were pushing for a study. That's why, um, knowing that even with this increase, we saw a decrease in our funding, um, it's one of those serious areas that we have to get in front of.
I think Ms. Colley, part of that, and we're going to come to you in October with more, but there is no going back. We're trying to figure out as we go forward, what measures can we put in place to, to further prevent, you know, an increase in identification. Of course, we, we don't want to get labeled as a failure to identify.
Right.
But we just don't want to test for the sake of testing and have someone identified. So that's part of what this is all about and, and the whole staff, uh, not just my senior staff, but the Department of Special Needs, uh, you know, and, uh, Patrice and her area and, uh, we're looking to see what we can do and identify any, any factors so that we can try to slow this down or still serve students, but slow down the unnecessary.
I guess what comes to mind is we know and senior staff knows, do our teachers fully understand this and, and maintenance of effort and, and our principals fully understand? Because, you know, at the, at the school level, they've got to have some concept of this as, as they look at identifying kids and what am I going to do next? And, and I'm not saying don't test and don't, but I, I, I think without the people who are in those classrooms with these kids seeing the numbers and the big picture, they just think, you know, let's just do it.
Ms. Norman, uh, to, to answer that, we talked about that in our, in our meeting last week with the whole group. It's, it's kind of like a lot of things that, that you're responsible for, like a school's responsible for a principal, some of their staff, teachers, special needs chairs, whether it's central office too, is how well do we maintain the professional development in this? And right now, I'm of the opinion, and we, we all shared it, that as we move forward and we identify certain factors that we can correct or try to correct and try to reroute, is sometimes a school, they'll get their PD here, they'll go back there, share it, you know, and then a lot of times it's just kind of like white noise. It just gets lost in the shuffle. You think you're doing the things you need to do and you're not. So I think from my point of view is we do a lot of professional development in other areas of our system. This has to be sustainable and consistent throughout all of our schools and, and the message needs to be sent. So I think part of that is, is, that's part of it, you know.
Because as much as we're responsible for the money, they've got to understand that that responsibility comes back to the school.
Correct, correct. And of course, we, we've got a good one in Sarah Young. Uh, I, I know Scotty works in so many different areas, but Sarah Young has been, uh, invaluable as a board attorney in helping with our special needs and, uh, giving guidance and advice. And we're looking at our five oh four. Patrice is doing a good job there. Uh, so we've, we've got some things we're talking about that we hope we can adjust on the fly and not, and maybe see, see an improvement next year.
All right. Here's the next tough subject. So this slide was, was the Title I slide that I reported on last year. Uh, it was based on the, the seventeen, eighteen school year. Um, as I went to pull the, pull the slide for, uh, for this budget hearing showing last year's, um, free and reduced numbers, you can see it was pretty, pretty shocking. Every school declined and they declined significantly. And, um, um, this is, this didn't happen because there was a money tree growing or poverty levels, you know, significantly declined in every single area of all of Baldwin County. Uh, this happened because we screwed up. Um, bottom line, uh, you don't go from, from forty-nine percent to forty-one percent without screwing up. Um, what happened? Um, again, we've already had a meeting with our staff. We've already come up with a correction plan. We've already, uh, made an emphasis to know this can't ever happen again. I mean, this is embarrassing. Uh, this is frustrating and this has, uh, millions of dollars of implications because of this was handled in this manner. So what happened? So, um, when a child is registered as free and reduced, one year, they have a thirty-day window from the start of the next year to where they're going to be temporary free and reduced. Um, if the notification has not gone out, if it's not managed, uh, properly and that thirty-day window expires, then they automatically hit paid. Um, the problem is that if you can, thirty school days and then twenty days after Labor Day is when our big state ADM report goes, um, that's, it's required to be submitted to the State Department of Education. That also includes our, um, our free and reduced numbers. And so this is a classic example of the left hand not talking to the right hand, uh, it not, you know, nobody really monitoring this. Uh, and the thirty-day window expired the twenty-seventh. One operating day, we submitted the report up to the state. There were thousands of students that were temporary that all of a sudden hit paid and it reduced us by ten percent and we lost millions of dollars of funding. Uh, I will say that, uh, this is being corrected. We're, we're monitoring it. There were twenty-seventh, there were twenty-seven hundred students that were on temporary status. Last week, we're, we're down to twenty-six. Uh, there are calls going out to everybody, um, that falls within that category, uh, in the same way that a call would go out if your lunch balance got low. Uh, we started, you know, online forms, um, and that's all good and that's all great, but, but some of the families, uh, that need this, they don't have internet, they don't have computers at home. So we're sending the forms back home, um, this year as well. And so, I mean, it's a, it's a big screw-up. Um, I, I think, you know, I don't think there's any one person to blame on it. Um, so it won't be corrected for a year. Uh, we can get in front of this and we can fix it for, for FY twenty-one, but for this year, um, we're having to face the repercussions. It's unfortunate that we have five twenty-first century grants that are up for, um, approval. At the same time, we're seeing a decline in our free and reduced numbers.
And if you're bored, you might get a call because my call's going out every day. For how many days, Terry? Until the ten more days, every day to all the identified people about you need to go online, you need to look at this, you need to come to the school, you know, you need to, uh, to check your balance, you need to do your, your forms. So that's going out every day. We've got some other things in place. And like John said, all we can do is move forward to make sure that, that this doesn't happen in the future. Uh, I don't really, like I, with John, I mean, of course, if it stops with me, I, I'm going to have to say, I don't know how this happened, you know, for every school to be declined. Uh, I don't know. Uh, so, uh, I mean, I'll take responsibility for that, but I won't take responsibility for it again because we've got a plan in place. And if it happens again, others will have to answer for why it didn't. for why it didn't, why we didn't do it.
I guess I'm certainly concerned about the money loss for, for these children. They're, they're on paid lunch for the year.
So, you know, one of the things is that, you know, again, of course, when they hit paid, then, you know, they realize they're paid and then it gets corrected. And so they can go back on free and reduced. The problem is our state reporting for Title I purposes, it was already submitted.
Right, but, but they will go back on, okay.
Yes, ma'am. It's just, you know, again, that's the schools, cafeteria managers, they, they have to, you know, to track down those kids. And so it's a joint effort from the, from the schools, from the counselors, the cafeteria managers, to IT monitoring it, to me monitoring it, to Mr. Tyler monitoring it, to, to, to a whole group effort to make sure this, this never happens again. You know, unfortunately, sometimes when it gets to the level that me and Mr. Tyler have it to review, it's too late. I mean, I saw it when the ADM report was, was due, what was I supposed to do?
Did these schools get knocked off?
Yeah, Daphne Middle School got knocked off. So that's an even bigger implication. And it's also a notice to all the principals here that saw their Title I budgets cut substantially is that they got to stay on top of this thing. I mean, everyone has. So I told you this was a little bit tougher one than, than, than the past couple of years, but again, these are all things that we can correct, correct, these are all things we can get in front of. But again, this, this is embarrassing, this shouldn't happen in Baldwin County and it will never happen again. Okay, looking at, looking at CMP program, we have, looking at the revenue there, we estimate, like I said before, about nine point nine million dollars in USDA reimbursement sales, especially when we have a very, very small number of kids on temporary and if they move from temporary to paid, it's because they actually fell out of the status and they weren't applicable anymore. So, you know, going back to this, you know, the calls that Mr. Tyler is saying, they're saying, please fill that out by September twelfth. We have till September twenty-fifth and literally, we will send people to their house to help get these forms filled if we have to. You can see we've got two-hundred-and-thirteen CMP employees countywide. This transfer from the general fund, you know, we have to cover the, the benefit cost for all two-hundred-and-thirteen employees. I have a slide that, that shows that breakdown, but you can see that's roughly about four-point-six million dollars from the general fund. Other than that, they're pretty self-sustainable, you know, using revenue coming in from the, the purchase of sales and also kind of USDA reimbursements there. So bringing in total revenue, about two-point-six million dollars. I told you I don't have many jokes because it was, I don't know, as I was going through this, I mean, it's, it's not really, yeah, it's, yeah, I just, it just, you know, it was, yeah, this didn't seem appropriate. All right, local revenue. So we've covered state, we've covered federal, let's dive into local. I'm going to jump around on these different slides and all these other things, but, but first I wanted to show the two big areas of, of revenue that we get locally and that's our twelve mills of Avalorum and in the general fund, that's our, our two percent sales tax. And so we get an abstract from the county revenue department, you've kind of heard me mention it in our monthly updates, that I got tricked one year and then I just went straight off their numbers and we're about two million less is what we actually received. So every year I take about two million dollars and I do a conservative reappraisal fee. And you can see the past couple of years, our budgeted Avalorum compared to what we have received have been, you know, within one percent. So that is definitely a, the model to go forward. I may even do a higher reappraisal conservative estimate as valuations continue to go higher and higher because we know the higher they get, the more people that want to challenge it and the more that, you know, those, that tax revenue can be delayed. That being said, this is our, this, this factors in the countywide revenue, it factors in what I would normally do for our, you know, reappraisal kind of conservative estimate there. So I said before that our non-mills countywide, we have to share that with Gulf Shores, we have ninety-three point eight percent of the, of the students in the, in Baldwin County. That gives us, so our non-mills of the forty-four, we will receive forty-one point five. Gulf Shores will receive six point one six, that'll be about two point seven. Our three-mill, the district taxes are treated differently than countywide taxes and so they will actually create a separate district in Gulf Shores that will follow the municipal boundaries of Gulf Shores and the value of a mill in those municipal limits will be directly appropriated to Gulf Shores. The, the three-mill district is where the ten-mill match comes from. Looking at the city limits of Gulf Shores, they had a, just their, their, their net number was about seven-hundred-and-eleven thousand per mill is what they were estimated to bring in. You know, taking a conservative estimate, I bumped that down to about two-eighty for this purpose, but that's where I, I backed out two million dollars from the fourteen million. So you can see their three-mill in the district is a little bit less than their percentage of our non-mills and that's because it's calculated based on the property values within that municipal district line. So I told everybody to remember, what was Gulf Shores' ten-mill match? Six point one? What are they going to get total of the twelve mills?
Four.
Four point seven. That's, that's about a one-point-three million dollar difference that they're going to have to take from sales tax. So speaking of sales tax, we finished last year with about forty-one point eight million dollars. You guys have been, been watching me every month. We've kind of been reporting that we've leveled off and so we've gone flat comparing, you know, year over year with sales tax. We haven't, you know, thank God we haven't gone down substantially, but we're roughly flat from where we were the previous year. So from a conservative standpoint, I decided to do one percent at about, about forty-one million and that's what I did for our budget this year. Again, you know, one of the big things I do during the amendment, the first one's in January, the second one's in July, is that, you know, we can kind of get an estimate based on how collections are coming in, if we need to amend that up or down. So we get ninety-three percent of our two percent sales tax, which is going to be, you know, which is going to be about thirty-eight point four for the one percent, combine them both together, about seventy-six point nine million dollars and about five million dollars will, will go to Gulf Shores. Interesting thing, you know, they get six percent of all the countywide sales tax, we get ninety-three percent of the sales tax in Gulf Shores. So, you know, I don't know. I don't think they realize that. So looking at the general fund, this is kind of a breakdown of our, of all of our kind of revenue sources that bring us to that total. And so Avalorum, I'm going to come back to this slide, but you know, you can see the breakdown in Avalorum for this year. Our percentage, we estimate about fifty-point-four million dollars in property taxes, about three-point-seven million dollars in probate taxes for fifty-four point two million dollars, representing about a one-point-five million dollar decline from the, from the previous year. What's interesting about this is that in FY20, I thought this was kind of interesting. I was, I had a spreadsheet with a bunch of my charts and graphs and it's almost identical to, to where we were net, you know, net Gulf Shores in two thousand and eight. So I just thought that was kind of interesting. Two thousand and eight, we brought in about fifty-four point two. This should say two thousand and nineteen, I mean, this should say two thousand and twenty, but that's fifty-four point two, so very close. So that's interesting. So you can see the breakdown there. Business privilege tax, I've kind of remained that the same. That actually comes in in September, it, it, there's not much volatility in that tax, what we've seen historically and so I kind of rolled that over from the previous budget. Like I said before, the seventy-six point four eight is the two percent. Again, that's the, that's, that's basically the ninety-three percent of the eighty-two million dollar estimated budget there. The half cent or the, it's, it's, it's less than half cent now of sales tax, that's earmarked for, for building and, and maintenance and other reasons. We spent about ten million of that directly paying the power bills and paying for insurance. That's going into special revenue fund, like I mentioned earlier, so this is just the general fund, but we actually are not, we don't have to share that. That was a local act that specifically named Baldwin County Board of Education. We don't have to share the proceeds there. That's estimated to bring in about sixteen point four million dollars. But there are specific earmarks regarding that. Other county revenue, majority of that is the alcohol tag, it's going down a little bit because I think we have to share with Gulf Shores, but the alcohol tax is about two-hundred-and-fifty K roughly. We see a manufactured and housing fee and also helping school tags, you know, thirty to forty thousand dollars there make up the other revenue. One of the big things I've tried to do this year, and I had it in place and it's in place right now, but I've really been trying to negotiate higher interest rates on our banks. You know, as, as you see, we're putting, we're keeping a, anywhere from a forty-eight to a fifty-two million dollar reserve balance, so why not get the highest amount of interest as we possibly can? We've reconfigured some of our, some of our accounts, you know, using Hayward's help and we're getting roughly around two percent where we were getting a little bit less than that. The problem is that, you know, it's, it's, if, if anybody's watched the markets or the interest rates, it's been very volatile over the last couple of months. You've seen the inversion of the yield curve where the, the two-years paying higher than the ten-year, which everyone screams, that's a sign of a recession. You've seen the feds cut rates in, in July, they probably will cut rates again in September. All that being said, I'm going to try to maximize the interest rates to the best of my ability. I'm estimating I can, I think based on our balance and the interest rate here, we can generate additional one-point-five million dollars of interest revenue. Again, that's a lot of factors out of our control, but we'll continue to maximize and get the best that we can. Other school revenue, that's really the after-school and the reimbursement and that's really direct reflection of Gulf Shores Elementary School rolling off. So you can see local revenue, you see a, a three-point-five, a three-point-seven million dollar difference there. Now, when I throw in the ten-mill match, which basically says, you know, you have to spend this to make up for the difference in state funding, it, again, it, it creates a very interesting story where it kind of levels out. All right. Is everybody doing okay? So that's, that's revenue, that's about halfway through. Does anybody need a break? We're, we're good? Now we're going to talk about expenditures. That's how I feel sometimes. I love drinking too, so. All righty. So looking at the expenditure side, which is, which is right here, you, you can see out of the total, you know, a big majority of that, you know, over a hundred-and-thirty-five million is directly associated with our debt and capital projects. So I wanted to take all the funds, show the entire picture and kind of show what it looks like. So if I show the entire picture, we can see that fifty-six point six is salaries and benefits, but I wanted to point out that thirty percent here is out of our control. This capital, this is regarding contracts that have already been awarded to our contractors, it's for construction currently already in process and we have a legal obligation to pay our debt payments. So thirty percent of our budget really is, is we have no control over right now. So I wanted to take out, so when I take out capital projects and I take out debt service, you see that we're about, total about, close to eighty-one percent of our budget is salaries and benefits. And so, and I think that's, you know, that's pretty standard for school systems, but I think it's time that we, we drill down into this. So what makes up that? So again, one of the most challenging things, putting together the budget is counting heads. You can imagine it gets chaotic because, you know, I count them and then the board approves them and then they, they retire and then they resign and then they transfer and then it's a, it's a, it's definitely a, a moving target trying to, trying to get the total employee count and it, sometimes it changes daily, just depending on the circumstances, who goes on leave and their replacement and all these other things. And so for the best of my ability, this was a snapshot of, of where we are for, for 2020. So state foundation, this would be the teacher units, this would be the administrative units, the assistant principals, counselors, one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-four positions. Like I said earlier, looking at state, so this is state, federal, local, bring us to our total. Thirteen nurses, transportation, two-hundred-and-seventy-six positions in state transportation, a lot, you know, majority bus drivers, also some of the shop personnel, the mechanics and, and some of those positions are included in there. The reading initiative, the state funds about sixteen positions there. State OCE, this is what I mentioned before, that was that, that thirty-five point nine million dollars, but we fund about four-hundred classified units. I try to fit as many people as I possibly can into state OCE because if we can put them in state OCE, then we can reduce them locally. State other, you can see that's, the big majority of the thirty-four is the OSR, that's the preschool teachers, that makes up about twenty-six positions. We see about, you know, six at risk and we see some state ESL, we see some miscellaneous there, that makes up the thirty-four. So total of, you know, twenty-six, twenty-six thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-six positions funded by the state. Going into federal, you can see IDA Part B, which is our special education funding funds, one, one-hundred-and-fourteen positions. Now, if you remember on the special education slide, we have five-hundred-and-eighty-three special ed positions and so you can see we have about twenty percent of the total employees actually funded federally. I do think that's a misnomer at the schools, I think that, you know, that they believe that everybody in special ed is funded federally and that, put them in special ed because they always have money, you know, guys, that's.
That's another part of that training.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Nothing could be further from the truth. Our title programs, this would be Title I and II, Title I, II, III, ESL, Title IV, fund a total of about sixty positions. CNP, as I mentioned, we have about two-hundred-and-thirteen positions there. And then fed other, these would be the ROTC positions at some of our high schools throughout the county, bringing us to about three-hundred-and-ninety-two positions federally funded. Locally funded, so we're roughly around seven-hundred-and-nine positions, I'm going to drill down into that in the next slide. These six positions, the city of Fairhope gives the EAC three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year and they've decided they'd like to spend those allocations with temporary-funded teacher positions. Temporary is usually what we do for a temporary funding source, meaning that they have to get non-renewed and rehired every year, but in order to, to, to work within the confines of the tenure law, that's how we have to operate there. So that's the other locally funded units there. So what is making up this seven-hundred-and-nine? And so, well, before I get there, I said that brings us to a total of about thirty-seven-hundred. You can imagine when you add substitutes and then all the other positions, not including here, we're definitely close to, close to four thousand. Yes, ma'am.
What was our locally funded last?
Uh, I think it was around six-hundred-and-forty, or six-hundred-and-forty, fifty, I'll, roughly off the top of my head. So it's, it's grown a, a good amount in, in one year and there are a number of different reasons for that, but let's break down that seven oh nine. And I think this summary, I usually include it in the, the one-cent sales tax report that's provided every month and I think we are around six-forty to six-fifty, I'll have to go back and get the exact number. But you can see a hundred-and-ninety-two teachers, this would include regular teacher, resource teachers, alternative teachers, consulting teachers, reading teachers, speech path teachers, all those teachers would fall under that category. We locally fund sixteen counselors over and above what the state provides. We currently have three principals on our locally funded list and you can probably guess, that's Orange Beach Middle, Orange Beach High and Alberta Middle. And that's the joy of state funding always being one year behind. And so we, these three positions should fall off next year and there will be, you know, next year will help as far as the reduction of some of our locally funded units because we had to eat a lot of the Orange Beach cost when Gulf Shore split and they'll be factored into the twenty-day report that's reported this October, which will be. because we had to eat a lot of the Orange Beach cost when Guff Shore split, and they'll be factored into the twenty-day report that's reported this October, which will be funded the next year. Other certified employees, that would be a lot of your certified directors, coordinators, supervisors, a lot of people in this building right here that would not kind of fall under these categories, but still have their teacher certification. Going in, so it's a total of two hundred and sixty locally funded certified positions in our budget. If we look at classified, we can see teacher aides, special ed is, makes up a majority of the hundred and one, followed by a few instructional and a few ESL aides. I tried to group these classifications to the best of my ability. If anybody wants more details, I can drill down in any of these classifications. But I tried to do the next category as clerical. So clerical would be like your bookkeepers, your registrars, your secretary. It would be like my accounts payable clerk, clerks in my office, or my payroll employees would fall under the clerical position, and we have ninety-three funded locally. Technical, and a part of this was kind of looking at the state manual. The state manual says you've got to code these people these certain ways, and they kind of had these already broken out, and I have to code them there anyway, and so that's kind of where I got some of the breakdown. So technical is really an IT technician, nurse, a social worker, someone with kind of a technical skill there. Seventy locally funded, a lot of those are nurses and social workers, and a lot of Homer's Building would fall under the IT technical category. Maintenance, whether that be custodians, mechanics, HVAC, plumbers, electricians, majority custodians over and above, and we're able to cover in OCE, would be classified in that category. You can see there's ninety-six positions there. I mentioned it earlier that we have about seventy-six locally funded bus drivers in order to meet our three hundred and... Okay. Our three hundred routes that we run every day in Ballin County, and that's not including your specialty routes that go to the career tech centers and some of the other programs. So that's the breakdown of our seven hundred and nine positions.
Are part of the locally funded bus drivers typically locally funded because we're paid for transportation in the rear?
Uh, yes, because we do send a route report, and that's funded the next year, and so that is a big part of it. And secondly, they just underfund transportation. So it's funded in arrears, and it's not fully funded to begin with. So those two things together create a very challenging situation for a growing system like Ballin County. And understand that nobody's growing like we are. If you look at the state population, it's going down. And so, I mean, we are the anomaly in the state, growing at, you know, approximately five hundred kids a year, you know, two to three percent. No one else is seeing that, and no one else is really addressing some of the problems from the state funding formula that is directly associated with growing school systems. Other administrative positions here, these fourteen, would be classified positions such as, you know, the classified directors, myself, Mr. Boatwright, Mr. Coffin, Mr. Willhite, coordinators, supervisors that fall under, you know, the, under maintenance or IT or those type things, would fall kind of under that fourteen position there. So when we bring up the total salaries and benefits for those seven hundred and nine employees, we can see it's forty-three point four million dollars. We've funded historically the extracurricular and athletic supplements out of the penny sales tax. We're having to fund it out of the regular sales taxes. We're not going to bring enough money to cover that for this year. That's one of the reasons why you didn't see the four percent applied to athletic supplements, is because this is getting tight. And I'm going to talk about that real fast. So I wanted to show historically, and I wanted to show, looking at total FTEs can be kind of misleading because you have a wide variety of costs. You know, you could have a bus driver that's making thirteen thousand, or a teacher with salaries that's costing you ninety thousand or those type things. So I wanted to show the total cost. The blue line is salaries, the red line is benefits. You can see in two thousand and seven, we were, we were at about forty-two million here. In two thousand and eight, I think there was, was there an eight percent state raise during that year? There was something big. I wasn't here at that time, but I think there was a big, two thousand and eight, going into two thousand and eight.
There was a big one, but I can't remember. I don't think it was a...
It was seven or seven and a half percent, probably, and that was probably the cause of two thousand and eight. The problem is, once two thousand and eight started, the economy started to roll back. In the middle of that, you probably saw the first year proration. Now, when you get cut state and you get cut federally, it all depends on how fast you act. You can see our locally funded in two thousand and nine increased all the way up to fifty-four million dollars because, you know, a lot of those positions were exorbit locally because at the time, unless you either have to lay them off or absorb them locally, no one knew how deep the recession is going to be. No one knew that the state was going to do three consecutive years of proration. No one knew that the biggest man-made disaster to ever occur in the United States would happen on our shores. And so, there was a combination and a perfect storm of a lot of things. And what happened is that we went from fifty-four point six in personnel cost to twenty-nine point three. And so, we had to cut twenty-five million dollars of personnel cost in one year. I was not here, thank God, and I know Ms. Dawson was right in the middle of it. I know that was probably an extremely difficult, dark time for Ballin County. And it's one of those times that we don't ever, ever want to repeat. I don't think anybody wants to go through, from the board level to the school level, to the administrative level, what happened during those recession years. You can see, we kind of floated along a little bit in two thousand and ten and two thousand and eleven. I don't know if you remember, but the, I think it was like the American, it was IRA funds, American Recovery Act or something. There was a good amount of federal funds that came in that we were able to, to help stop the bleeding a little bit. We enacted, the county commission acted, the penny sales tax, that helped us. But you can still see where we are. And so, going into this year, we're at forty-three point four. So, again, this is nothing, you know, this is just me saying it's time to be a little bit cautious. If we don't remember where we came from, we're doomed to repeat it. And so, I mean, we're still healthy, we still have a two-month reserve balance, there's no talk of proration, there's the rolling reserve at the state. There's a lot of different things to protect against that, but I don't ever want the progress and what we're doing in Ballin County to be, you know, derailed, you know, because of unforeseen circumstances.
And we mentioned, John and myself mentioned to y'all probably the last couple of months about, we'll get that twenty-day report, you know, we'll see what our numbers are. But we've got to be guarded, you know, as a former principal. I know I'm going to ask for hopefully what I can get, or more than I can get, hoping I can get something for overcrowding. But a lot of this has to fall back on our principals on how they schedule. And I know Holt works with the elementary principal sometimes, like, well, you can ease overcrowding if you just move this one around here, you know, and ease the overcrowding in your classroom. And Marty is going to have to be doing the same thing with high school, you know, it's going to come. We're going to get these requests, and we're going to try to satisfy as many as we can. But you can see just right at forty-four million dollars locally, we've got to be careful in, you know, how many locally funded units we delve out for this coming year.
And there's no single reason for the, for the big influx. You can see, we've tried to keep it gradual in that, you know, we front it, we absorb it by the state the next year, we front it, we absorb it by the state the next year. And so, trying to stay on top, you know, one of the issues that we have to deal with is just the one-year lag time in state funding. We also had to deal with a higher than normal amount of locally funded units due to the split of Guff Shores. I mentioned earlier, we hired special ed personnel and then got cut by six hundred thousand dollars, and we absorbed them into locally funded positions. The good news is that we're fighting a ton of resources to the schools. I mean, there's, there's a lot of resource teachers, there's a lot of other positions out there that are directly serving the schools that have not been in place previously. And so, it's kind of a combination of a lot of those things. This chart right here, and again, this is kind of, I just wanted to throw up a warning flag. This is the one percent sales tax. Blue is personnel cost. You can see historically, I've tried to keep about a five percent cushion in here. You can see we went from, you know, about forty-one to thirty-eight, and we jumped up to close to forty-four. And so, for the first time, we're seeing these numbers cross. And so, you're seeing a five million dollar gap there where we're going to have to go and grab money from the other sales tax in order to do that. And the other sales tax has a lot of debt obligations and a lot of other things tied to it. I'm going to, I'm going to wrap all this together in one slide in a minute, but I think there are things that we can do to help get a handle on this. I think the virtual school is a very unique opportunity, and that allows us to earn state units that we can flex out to other schools. I think removing the intermediate school model and going K six is going to be helpful. I think that, and then just reevaluating a lot of our positions. And this kind of goes to my next slide here. You probably remember this. This is, this is one of my favorite charts that I've, that I've done, and then it shows that the red is the number of employees, and the blue is the, is the number of students. Now, these numbers are actual enrollment that year, and they include, and they include pre-K. So that's why they're, I wanted to specify that, because we have the ADN, which is based on last year. I tried to get this as accurate as possible. You can see back in the day, there were way too many, there were way too many people. I mean, that was clear. You can see even during that massive twenty-five million dollar cut we had to do in one year, our student enrollment continued to grow. But as you can remember, this is where we were last year, including AD, including pre-K. If you include pre-K, you probably drop, you drop about two thousand kids from the Guff Shores. This is the first time ever these two lines have kind of merged together. Really, is because we're providing a higher level of support to the schools than we have in definitely the last decade. Also want to point this out, that you can see we're at thirty thousand, three hundred here, and it was kind of interesting. If you go, if you go back to two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, we are at thirty thousand, three hundred here. But if you follow the lines, we have two hundred and forty more employees with the same count. And so, when I said that we are, I mean, we are providing, you know, a lot of resources to the school and more than we've ever provided, definitely in my tenure here in Ballin County. But I definitely think that, you know, because of the number of resources and two hundred and forty more employees with the same student count, we have to be flexible. We have to be creative. We got to use what we have currently in place if we want to sustain it, and that's the most important thing. I don't want us to create a program or initiative or anything that gains momentum, and then we can't sustain it, and we have to cut it. I mean, I think that's the, that's the worst thing that we can possibly do. And so...
We have to make sure our public players that these students are committed to our students.
Right. Absolutely. You know, whether it's, whether it's more janitors, keeping your, keeping your school clean, to more teachers, reducing class sizes, to additional resource teachers, you know, providing, you know, academic training and those type things. I mean, there's a lot of resources throughout the board. But, again, we kind of need to... So, from John Wilson's perspective, and this is just my perspective because it's ultimately the superintendent and it's the board's call. But I do think going forward, the emphasis on locally funded units has to be directly in the classroom. It has to be accommodating the growth that we're seeing. It's got to be trying to keep class sizes to a manageable level. Central office, we got to stop it. Resource teachers not in the classroom, probably have to stop it. I think the emphasis at this point needs to be in the classroom. But that's just the John Wilson take. Anybody else would like to comment? Again, but that's not my call. Superintendent is the board, but, you know, for what it's worth, you know, I'll give my opinion.
I know. I've mentioned this a couple of times. We're used to seeing student data, that's the thing. I would like as a board to see overall student data, achievement data, you know, here over here, and see, are, are, are our resources that are being actually paying off? Like, big picture. I want us to see this little piece right here, which makes it look like, yeah, this is great, everything's running. What does it look like overall? Aren't we really spending these dollars, these lowly, very precious dollars that we would be using for the community?
I think it does make sense, Ms. Call. I know that we, we bring you the data, and we show you the growth and the increase in data. I think you're just kind of wanting to make sure that a picture's laid out there so you can kind of see it on the screen, how everything that we're putting in to achieve this is...
Just as an example, not calling anyone out, but just as an example, the last set of data we saw, we got a specific reading area that we were working on. Well, what does it look like, how do you like, how do they look overall? Not just one specific area, because that looked great, but are we being speculative upon it?
That can be done. Yes, ma'am.
I think that a lot of these employees, if they're nurses, if they're counselors, we may not...
Well, no, I know, I know.
Right. You may see it in attendance statistics or in referrals or discipline statistics where you wouldn't see it.
And I will say, Ms. Jones, she does a good job in that she lists out all the different medical conditions at each school, and then she has a rank from, from one to three by the severity of those medical conditions. And then through a data-driven process, that's how we assign if a school has more than one RN or has an LPN and that. So, I mean, that's, that's how I like to operate, like everything, you know, data-driven, like to CYA. If anybody questions it, this is the reason why. All righty. I know Ms. Lindsay brought this up a couple of months ago, is that a lot of employees may not realize the benefit cost. And the benefit cost is a, is a big, huge cost, and it's a cost that continues to grow. You can see for every employee, no matter if they're a bus driver that's bringing in twelve thousand, or the superintendent, you know, we pay eight hundred dollars a month, we pay ninety-six hundred dollars a year. That's a sweet healthcare plan. As someone who came from the private sector, the private sector doesn't do that. You have to pay that out of your pocket. So it's a, it's a premium healthcare plan, and it's awesome that that can be provided to all of our employees. But it does come at a cost of ninety-six hundred dollars that the board has to pay for, especially for locally funded and units each year. I've talked about retirement. Does everybody understand the difference of the tier one and tier two? I think everybody understands that, you know, that change was done starting, you know, January of two thousand and thirteen. Tier one, you know, we may pay a little bit less, but it's not nearly the level of benefits that tier one teachers have. And serious discussions are happening throughout the state in order to revise that, because you're seeing a lot of people, a lot of students in college not going into education. You know, we're fortunate in Ballin County, this is a beautiful place to live, and we're able to provide a competitive teacher salary, you know, five and a half percent over the state and a lot higher than our surrounding areas. But other smaller, more rural systems throughout the state are having a serious crisis-level situation in trying to find teachers for their school. It was a little bit of an overcorrection by the legislative delegation at the time. It has saved money, but at the same time, what are the, what's the collateral damage that that did? Because...
I wonder if some of the honest effort has passed through the government.
And I think it's, it's been, it's been looking, you know, I think last year, it kind of died on the last day. There's been, I think there's a task force committee that presented to the state school board, maybe the governor and some other folks. And I think one of the hangups that killed it last year is that if they're going to do a tier three, or if they're going to do something else, legislators want it just for teachers. They don't want everybody else in it. And so, you know, and they made the comment, if the issue is recruiting teachers, then that's who we need to focus on. And I'm sure there are, there are, you know, pros and cons and difference of opinions regarding that statement. But that looks like where we may be heading for this legislative session, and of course, we'll be on the lookout. Social Security is, you know, the board payment is roughly six point two percent. Uh, social security is, you know, uh, the board payment is, you know, roughly 6.2%. Medicare is 1.45. So you can see total employee, uh, benefit cost, uh, for all of our, you know, over 3,700 employees is close to $70 million. Um, I, uh, Ms. Lindsay had a great, uh, great idea. She said, can we show an example? And so, I wanna show an example here. So if you have a brand new, new teacher with a master's degree, uh, straight out of college, um, which is very common in, in Baldwin County, you have a starting salary of, of 49,000, um, 18,000, uh, almost 19,000 is what the benefit cost would be, uh, bringing that to 68,000. So you can imagine if you get someone with, with, um, five years, 10 years, you can easily run to the 70, the 80,000. You factor in supplies and substitute cost, you could, it's, it's, it's very easy. Uh, it probably averages 85 to 90 when all those things per teacher, when you factor in the true cost. Um, hopefully that's, uh, hopefully that is, that, that is helpful. And, and that's one of the things that I, I, I do agree. I, I think a lot, a lot of our employees, you know, probably don't, don't realize to, to the extent of what we have to pay an employer benefit cost. And, uh, getting a, uh, you know, a pension is such a rare thing, uh, in the world nowadays. I mean, it, it only exists in the governmental environment, uh, but it's, it's such a, such a huge benefit as well. Alright, um, moving on, looking at our debt service, uh, you can see our 2012 warrants, that was refunded from 2005. Um, and our 2007 was refunded in two different issuances and those are included here with the principal and with the interest. Uh, like I mentioned, we have about 2.1 million in state pool warrants. That's reduced from our state capital allocation. Um, talking about our Pago, uh, program, we have to make a $15 million principal payment, um, each year in order to bring, um, that balance down to zero in a four-year period. And so, the Pago program is a, is a really neat program. Very proud of it. It's, you know, future boards and future administrations will, will look down and say, thank God we're doing this. And then the foresight to do this is gonna be incredible and it's gonna save us hundreds of millions of, of interest, but it, it is very cash flow heavy and intensive. I mean, it's kinda, you know, it's kinda like the decision, well, do I want to sacrifice vacations and everything else and pay my car off this year, knowing that I'm going to, you know, save in interest or, you know, again, it's one of those things. Um, and, um, but it's been very successful and then what we're able to accomplish. So bringing us to about $22.9 million in principal payments, about $7.3 million in debt for a total of about, uh, $30.3 million. Uh, you can see the long-term implications. Now, we're currently in the planning phase of, of, of Pago, uh, four, phase four. Um, we're estimating, thinking that that one may run 75 million, which instead of 15 million principal payments, probably gonna be closer to 17 or 18 million principal payments. So, you know, we said that the career tech center, um, i- is definitely gonna be a, a big focus of the next Pago. It's something that, um, I, I, I think it's, it's definitely due. Uh, there's a demand in Baldwin County, the career tech facilities are, are, are aging and they're, they're really not able to, to fully equipped and train, uh, our students for the demand in Baldwin County. So you can see that's not included here. That's what's making up that, that drop. So you can see, if we include it for another four years here, but you can see kinda some of our other bonds. This, um, this is a state bond. You have to do, make a balloon payment at this point in time. It's not, it's gonna look like this on the books, but we've been paying a sinking fund payment every single year, so we don't have a big cash flow hit in that year. You can see we have a big, one of our big local bonds payoff here. Um, I think that's the, the 2005 refinance, 2012. And then our 2007, that was refi'd in 15 and 17, goes all the way to 2037. And so the beautiful thing about the Pago, this is it. I mean, we, we've just done $100 million of construction and there is no long-term debt on that. So I mean, it, it's an amazing program, but in order to do that, and this is where I kinda wanna roll this all together in, in one picture. Um, in order to do that, we're getting, we're getting very tight. And so, um, the blue is the personnel cost that I mentioned. Um, the orange is our debt service that I mentioned. The line is the $77 million in sales tax revenue. And as Mr. Tyler says, we live and breathe off sales tax. Um, so you can see if we wanna continue that program and in my opinion, we have to continue. If you continue to ignore the growth, then schools are gonna get overcrowded and the problem's just gonna get worse and worse and no one's gonna solve this for us. This, the state's not gonna solve it for us. The federal government's not gonna solve, solve it for us. So if we don't figure it out ourselves, then, um, you know, no one else will. So you can see that's about, that's, um, 73.6 million dollars, uh, if you combine our personnel, locally funded personnel and our debt service. Um, it's, it's, it's getting tight. Um, if, if we wanna continue this, we gotta make, make sure we can maintain this. If this continues to grow, then we'll, we'll have to reduce this, which means somebody's gonna get bumped out or we won't be able to, to, to do what, um, you guys have tasked, you know, me and the superintendent to do. And so it, it's finding that, um, that happy medium in between.
It is finding a happy medium. John and me have talked about this recently. We wanna build new schools. We wanna reduce overcrowding. We wanna take portables out of the mix best we can. I'm not sure that this county will ever be able to catch up to growth because of what, what people just come here. You've had exoduses from counties around us. They come from the north. The balancing act, I told John, for, for him and myself, is I love all the new constructions going on. And to me, your point, Ms. Colley, I agree that we can look at a snapshot and see how the academic programs are enhancing all of our students across the county. I think that's what you're wanting to look at. But to build new schools and, uh, reduce some overcrowding and then to all of a sudden abandon academic progress, I'm not in favor of that. I mean, so we got, you know, there's gotta be a balancing act. There, there has to be a happy medium. Me and John talked about that. Uh, you know, we, we've pumped a lot in over the last four years. I do agree, we talked about, I said, John, we, we probably need to pump the brakes a little bit, slow down a little bit, continue our academic progress, but maybe not at the amount that we've done in the last three-plus years. And we, I think we both can agree on that. So thi- this is a balancing act. This is very difficult, um, you know, because I know that people come here for quality education and we've gotta figure out how to continue that, but also build schools and reduce overcrowding. So John and myself are on the same page and, um, it's just trying to figure out how to make it work. That, that's difficult, so...
Alright, um, those were really all the hot button, um, topics that I wanted to delve into.
Good, we're done.
I'm not done yet, cause I, cause I, I do think it's important to, to walk through the rest of our, our expenditures and, and, and explain what we are, but...
Mike, are we done?
Uh, here. So if we look at our total expenditures, um, is everybody doing okay? I told, I told everybody to stretch beforehand, yes.
I was hollering down, I was hollering down to the, I was hollering down to the board member over, uh, finance, they asked me if we were done yet.
Okay.
He's siphoning down there.
And, and, and me and Mike did have the opportunity to go through all these numbers. That's the finance chair. I wanted to give him the ability to, to, to meet and then talk through it. And he's still here. He showed up, so, uh, that, that's great. Uh, so if we look at everything, uh, going, going on here, look at all the different funds, you can see the breakdown there. This is a little bit misleading here on instructional services. Remember that we just bought eight and a half million dollars of Chromebooks. Well, this, this is all of our funds. So this is all, so, so we, yes, yes, we got state funding for that. We spent and bumped up our budget in 2009. That will last three years. So that's that and we also lost, you know, 111 teachers at Gulf Shores. Um, instructional support services, you know, again, this category would, would, would be like your administrative staff at the, at the school, that was about flat. Operations and maintenance, um, like I mentioned before, we've done a fantastic job maintaining some of our schools and, and so, um, you know, the, the, the level of expenses is not where it used to be. When I came here in 2012, we were five years without addressing any of the, the maintenance needs in our schools and so we knew that was a priority we needed to do. We're able to reduce that and move that over to, to, um, uh, new construction. Auxiliary services, this is CMP and this is transportation. Um, general admin, I'm gonna talk about this, um, in detail, but one of the unfortunate things about the state manual and how they forced me to, to recode things is that I have to recode all of our server and IT calls into, into general admin services. And so I know that we're gonna have to do some server upgrades specifically to our accounting system. It got struck by lightning, uh, uh, a couple of months ago. I had a panic attack, so I was trying to put together the budget and I was working on a weekend and nothing was working. So congratulations to, to, to Homer's people. They came in on an off day and fixed it, but we're gonna need to replace it and come up with the full time. And so some of those costs are factored into general and administrative services. Capital outlay here, again, uh, our capital projects span multiple fiscal years. Um, they start one year, have them budgeted one year, gets delayed, rolls to the next year. And so, again, it's hard to, to, to get a, a true picture there, just looking at fiscal year to fiscal year. Debt service, talked about that. Uh, so if we look at, if we look at all of our expenditures for all of our funds, you can see the breakdown here and it's still, you know, is roughly, you know, close to 30% in debt service and capital, um, with, you know, a large portion of, of our budget going for instructional and instructional support. And because we're doing so much in building and that kinda stuff, it kinda skews the percentages. I mean, we're building more schools than anybody else. And this is, this is, this is this chart and this is a percentage of your budget. And so I wanted to show this one, cause I, cause I think it's good. I also wanna point out that nobody else is building the level of schools that we're building right now. And so as a percentage of your budget, when one's big, it can kinda skew some of the other, uh, uh, areas. So I'm gonna drill down into this area, this area and this area in more details. But you can see all the rest of the areas are, are about where we've been in previous years. So in order to drill down in our instructional, instructional support services, I wanted to take what we spend per, per student and I wanted to take what the state average per student. In order to get the state average per student, I took $3.9 billion that was spent in FY18 and I divided it by 730,000 students and got $5,000, uh, $460 per instructional. So you can see when you really drill down into it, we're still providing more than the state average, even though we're doing a lot more building than the state average as well. And so like Mr. Tyler says, you know, this is really the balancing act that we're trying to do and we're trying to maintain that we continue to offer premium academic services compared to a lot of our peers throughout the state. I did the same thing with capital construction. What are they spending statewide? $734, uh, dollars per student. What are we spending? Uh, over 3,000. Now, when the state comes out with their per people, uh, numbers, it does not factor capital construction. And so I have to remind people that, that this, that's a major investment that we're doing throughout the county. And so just because the PPE is this or it doesn't match that, realize of the massive investment that we're doing, uh, per student to, to make sure our facilities can handle the growth in Baldwin County. Same thing with administrative cost. Um, uh, you can see the state average is about 438. Um, we're averaging about 361, you know? And so, you know, I wanna also preference that, um, again, not many other systems, in fact, I don't think any other system our size is completely one-to-one. And so, um, if you take out the IT component and the one-to-one component, you can see how bare-boned our admin cost is, um, you know, cause we're spending, uh, significant more than a lot of other systems throughout the state. Uh, I did a graph joke, cause I wanted to throw something in there, cause it's, it's been a little bit, it's been a little bit kind of a heavy, heavier, uh, budget meeting, but, uh, you know, as we go into football season, you know, this kinda reminds me, you know, you'll be, I, I probably need to cancel DirecTV, cause you know, commercial, it's super clear. Going for a touchdown pass, it's going to, the reception's gonna go out. It never fails. Anyway, I like to surprise you guys, um, throw, throw a joke graph in there. Um, the categories definitions, I'm gonna do it by category here and, uh, I wanted to provide this. I'm gonna kinda go facts. I know we, we've been, we've been here long, but the different categories, um, the one I wanna, you know, really talk about, personnel services, that's pretty self-explanatory. Purchase services, again, we have to follow the state accounting manual here. And purchase services is really kinda like a catch-all category. Um, purchase services, as you see, uh, it's for services which by nature can be performed by person or for, of firms with specialized skills or knowledge. Services performed by persons other than school employees to operate, repair and maintain property owned or used by the school system. That's the state's definition. Examples would be professional development, um, auditing, legal fees, building repairs, um, garbage service, insurance, uh, telephones, internet, postage. All of our utility costs is technically considered purchase services. Traveling and training and all those things. So I, I hate it because I think it's really too broad and I wish the state would, would redo their, their manual and kind of, um, go into a little bit more details, cause it makes it easier for me. If I see someone in another purchase service category, I'm like, can you be a little bit, can you kind of explain to me what this is? Cause it can, it can cover such a wide variety of things. Materials and supplies, for the purpose of the, of how we categorize it, it's anything that's consumed, worn out or deteriorated through use. Um, that's everything from your books to your janitorial supplies, to your tires for your buses, to your food in the cafeteria, to your office supplies and all those things. Capital outlay, again, that's, that's any type of fixed assets, including land, existing in buildings, improvements, capitalized property, buses, furniture, servers, et cetera. So going into the general fund, which is how, basically the fund where we operate our school system, you can see the breakdown there. And like I mentioned, don't forget that we just bought, you know, a ton of Chromebooks. And so that's really driving the difference in instructional services. It wasn't, you know, it wasn't really, it was nothing cut. It was just, you know, we got 8.5 million from the state at perfect timing, uh, after three years for the Chromebook. And so if you take out the $8 million, um, difference there and you take out the 111 teachers that were moved from Gulf Shores, you actually see this increase. Um, instructions...
John, if I'm not mistaken, I'm Homer too, but it's, it's really amazing that we're able to sustain the one-to-one...
Yes.
For two cycles and we've yet to go really into any local funds to, to provide that.
Outstanding point, yes. You know, the first cycle, if everybody remembers, was we collected and sold all the MacBooks and the, the proceeds from the MacBooks covered the first round of Chromebooks. Um, we were able to get state funding for the second round, so that's a very, very good point and so, um...
Homer and his folks do a wonderful job of maintaining those and getting the best bang for the buck when we have to turn them over.
Um, you can see the, um, instructional, um, support services, again, you know, it, it's an increase year-over-year. We continue to, uh, we put a big emphasis in academics. We've provided a lot of support over the last couple of years and we continue to. Um, operations and maintenance, uh, you saw that drop. Auxiliary services and the general fund is transportation. We're seeing that increase and that's kinda in line with our, uh, revenue increase. Uh, general and admin, um, services, like I said, a big part of that is, uh, is some server cost expenses and, and kind of big one-time expenses from, um, from an IT standpoint. Other expenditures, a lot of that's related to our after-school program. Um, that's remaining about, about flat. So you can see, looking at the general fund, you can see 81% is instructional, instructional support. Knowing that the general fund is the operational fund for the school system, that's where it should be. Uh, you take out capital, you take out your debt, that's, that's where our focus needs to be for the general fund. Um, you can see our operation, the maintenance at 6.7, auxiliary at 5.7, our general admin at 4.1 and other is 1.8. Um, drilling down into all the different categories, instructional services, that's directly, that's, that's teachers, that's the direct interaction between the teachers and the students. Instructional support, like I mentioned, is services or activities, providing supervision or technical logistical support to facilitate enhanced instruction. Principals, AP, counselors, et cetera. Our budget in the, uh, in the general fund, this does not include federal funds, is a $213 million for instructional, instructional support. You can see 94% of that is personnel, 1% purchase service and 5% materials and supplies. Operations and maintenance, this includes the general fund and the half-cent maintenance sales tax, uh, that's within the special revenue fund. Uh, you can see that, you know, 39% is personnel cost, uh, 19% is just maintenance repair services. 36% of this is, uh, utilities and insurance and, uh, 7% of $34 million budget is directly related to janitorial and, uh, maintenance supplies at the school level. Um, graph joke number two. Yeah, I know I'm guilty of this one. I've probably done that to, to you guys before. I apologize. Um, going through, uh, going through transportation, you got a budget of $17.3 million. You can see... You can see 67% of that is personnel. You can see 3% purchase services. 15% was broken out in fuel costs, bus parts, supplies, and then another 15% is direct new school bus purchases for FY20. Child nutrition program, you can see 47% of that is personnel cost, 45% of that is direct food cost, 2% is purchase services, and 7% would be materials and supplies and equipment in the cafeteria setting. General admin, this is what I was mentioning earlier. I tried to break this up. You can see personnel is 61%. Server and infrastructure cost are, is 11%, so that's a huge chunk of the $10.7 million here. Also, as I was drilling down in some numbers, in materials and supplies, some of our non-instructional software is included in that, such as antivirus and security software that's loaded onto the students' machines. I think there's about $700,000 worth of that, as well as some other kind of computers and other things for the non-instructional purpose, for a lot of your administrative purposes. 5% is legal, 8% purchase services, and 5% is directly related to business and HR systems, and that's, that's next gen and chronous. Other expenditures, you can see really what's categorized as other expenditures is any activities that operate outside what's normally considered the school day, and so that falls under after-school. And for some reason, the pre-K program is still classified there from the state purpose. So you can see, majority pre-K and about 30% of the $4.7 million budget would be, would be extended day. Now, this is not 21st century. That would be the non-21st century grants that are self-sufficient based on the parents paying weekly. Going into our large maintenance projects, like I said before, previously, we've averaged, you know, eight to nine million dollars of our large maintenance projects. We're down significantly. I kind of rely on Frank and his guys. They evaluate the schools, they tell me what they need, and we accommodate as much as we can. We try to use the state capital allocation to accommodate as much of this maintenance as we possibly can. Some of it's coming from the half-cent as well. But you can see direct school-related maintenance projects, looks like we have about, you know, 955,000 there. And then certain allocations that I give to Frank, and he kind of uses that throughout the county as necessary. That makes up the additional $2.5 million. We've done a lot of repaving at the schools. You've probably seen that. We'd like to continue to do that. Replacing gym bleachers, replacing the floors, continuing to renovate outdated restrooms. Intercoms are surprisingly very expensive. Floor replacement, random roof replacement, I like to keep half a million dollars in emergency HVAC funds in case something goes down throughout the year, which inherently always does. And then last there on the, on the list is that we continue to have some money to reinvest in the 160 acres that we have in Faircloth Field to try to, you know, replant that situation. So that brings us up to the $3.4 million. This is our pay-as-you-go update, and I am almost done. You can see, just as a couple of days ago, I tried to update these numbers of what's been spent year-to-date. Spanish Fort High School is still out there. We're hoping that that's going to be finished soon. Alberta High School's right there at the finish line. Bayonet Middle School's right there at the finish line, too. You can see, I included the city performing arts. You can see how we've, you know, that, and the important thing I want to mention, too, is, you know, how we went from 60 to $100 million in our project. Now, you know, take out what Orange Beach is funding, and it still brings us to about 90, you know, 96. But it's, you remember that chart where it showed the $5 million surplus between the 1% sales tax and what our personnel? I was moving all of that every single year, and, and that's how we got here. And so we were able to do that. We were able to expand our budget. We were able to deal with situations where the bids came in significantly higher than we were expecting. I can't sit here and say and promise I'll be able to continue to do that going forward. So, yeah, I know. Why? Yeah, why?
The kinds of trees we're planting at Faircloth Field?
Yeah.
The ones that grow money, right?
Yeah, in about 15, 20 years. Is that right, Tony?
So, I have a question, and any of your Frank might be able to answer it, too. Ninth-grade academies, I know we talked about we were going to try to do those at all the high schools, and is there a plan to do any more other than just Fairhope?
No, no, there is a plan. I mean, we're going to move forward. I'm not asking all the high schools right now to implement a ninth-grade academy program. Fairhope has already kind of separated some of their ninth graders this year, because their population's going to grow and can't handle it. We're going to do that academy. Daphne High School is the next on the list. We've talked to Joe Sharp. He wants to do a ninth-grade academy. I mean, they all, I'm going to have them all do it, but some of them can do it with, up under the structure of their own building.
Right.
I mean, let's just say, I mean, let's say Spanish Fort, I'm sure that Brian with help will be able to segregate his ninth graders in the future, once we fully implement this on his campus. Without a separate structure.
So which schools do you think are going to need a separate structure at this point?
Well, right now, we're just watching our growth, and we know that Fairhope, we know that Daphne, and we're just going to go from there. Foley, we've added wings to them before. Of course, their population's coming down a bit, and they had a ninth-grade wing anyway, so they can go back to that wing. But I haven't actually mandated that our high schools do this this year. Some are experimenting, and as our staff sits and talks, we'll probably, we'll probably increase my thoughts about how we need to do that. But I know Daphne and Fairhope are sure going to need structures.
Yeah.
And we'll just see where we go from there on the growth of our schools.
Okay.
Yeah, but all of them eventually are going to do some type segregation for their ninth graders.
Okay, thank you.
You know, we hope to potentially have Daphne in Phase Four. We're trying to get some finalized numbers and that kind of stuff to see what all we can squeeze in, the 75 million. So we know they need it. We know, like Mr. Tyler said, Daphne and Fairhope are two of our critical high school sites, based on growth and projections and just limited, you know, space in the building. We know that they'll need a new structure, at least in the near future. We hope to bid, I believe the plan is to have Daphne Middle School and Fairhope bid out in September, and bring those to the board maybe in October for approval, and get started on that process. I call that Phase 3.5, because it's not really Phase Four. It's kind of what we were squeezed in the middle of that, and that's just a product of using as much money as we possibly could. You know, we're using the two and a half million dollars that we got from proceeds from the K-1 Center to help reduce the cost of the Fairhope ninth-grade academy, and using other proceeds from everywhere we can to try to squeeze these in as well, so.
And one thing that we've learned from these past pay-as-you-go is, a lot of it, we assume responsibility of, is not getting things out there as quick as we needed to. I know Frank does his best. We've all talked about, what have we learned from these past pay-as-you-gos? Of course, one thing is, we need to get the design up and running early. We need to get, you know, some of the things identified, and we need to get out on the streets for a bid, you know, way ahead. We know right now, we can't build a school in 12 months. You know, 18-plus months, a lot of pressure was put on Frank. I know he would probably say he applied a lot of pressure to himself, but we all took that burden on, but we've learned that we've got to get way out there in front, if funds are available, to continue this building program and identify early.
Did the virtual school get approved, please? Are they in?
No. Right now, we're going to, well, right now, Frank has had some conversations. Last week, I think Frank would probably say Randy Sanks spoke to the Building Commission. They called him, called Randy, who's right there at the virtual school. He was able to answer a lot of their questions. Frank, I think, Frank, you were telling me that.
We got comments back yesterday afternoon, and we always plan to get comments back. There's probably 20 items, so we forward them straight to the architects and the engineers, and they address those. A lot of them are just certifications, so that should be going back no later than tomorrow, and they'll send us the revised stuff back. So once that's done, then we can set up for installation.
If I could, I'm afraid to even say when, you know? We're holding our breath that the Building Commission now is taking a breath and doesn't seem to want to use us as a whipping post as hard right now. Maybe they're going to get all this stuff done in a timely manner, you know? And we created a lot of our own problems. We really did, so we're going to work on that. It's not just the Building Commission.
Well, the good news is that, you know, knock on wood, we're still projecting a very healthy general fund balance, with an ending fund balance over $50 million. I do think that we're going to have, this current year, over $50 million as well. And so, you know, I know we've had a lot of hard discussions and a lot of things brought to your attention. I do think it was appropriate to do it, but I also wanted to end it saying that, that we're still in a good place in Baldwin County, looking at our general fund, looking at our operational fund. Questions, legally, there's a, there's a form there that anybody can, can write any questions that they want, public input sheet. You can email me any questions. Any questions I get, written or emailed, I will address those at the second budget hearing. That second budget hearing will be before the work session on September 17 at Alberta Elementary, I think, or.
Louise, we know where that is.
Elementary. All the budget information that's available today, including the information in the books and the presentation, will be available on our website starting tomorrow, and you can get there at bcbe.org/accountability. And again, anything, any questions, concerns, anything that I can do. It has been two hours and 10 minutes, so I know everyone's exhausted, and I'm ready to jump in my car and we can go home, so.
Well, I want to say what John does. John doesn't hit the, John doesn't hit the panic button, but he does when we talk. He'll say, "We're not in panic mode yet," but he just looks out ahead, and that's why he's the best at what he does as far as our schools and state out of bounds. And I applaud that, and so we're very fortunate. But John, great job.
Thank you. Thank you for your kind words, yeah.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I understand. I understand. Yeah.